What do you think?
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of March 22, 2011. I'd like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the floral arrangement they always provide for us. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
See members from Recology in the audience tonight. Would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few announcements this evening. The 32nd Annual Pancake Breakfast will be held Saturday, April 16 at 9:00 a.m., and the annual Easter egg hunt at 11:00 a.m. at San Bruno City Park. And we will be having a disaster relief fundraiser for the people of Narita, Japan, and it will be held this Thursday, March 24, 2011, from 2:00 till 5:00 p.m. at Parkside School Cafeteria, 1801 Niles Avenue, right here in San Bruno. The city of San Bruno will be partnering with Parkside Intermediate School, the San Bruno Lions Rotary Clubs, and the Sister City Committee to conduct a fundraising activity to assist the victims of Japan's recent tragedies. They really helped us, by the way. The public is invited to donate funds and make 1,000 origami cranes at Parkside School this Thursday, March 24, again from 2:00 till 5:00. Cranes have a special significance in the Japanese culture, representing hope and good wishes. All funds donated from this event will be sent to the city of Narita, Japan, our sister city for more than 20 years. More information about the event or other ways to donate to this cause are listed on our city's website, so we hope you can attend this Thursday from 2:00 till 5:00. Presentations, there aren't any presentations this evening. Pardon me, review of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Everybody okay? Approval of minutes of the council meeting of March 8, 2011. There is one minor change, and that is item 8B, references and approval by Vice Mayor Salazar, actually is an approval by Mr. Councilmember Ibera. So I think, is that the only change, Carol? Thank you. Anything else on those minutes? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Anything on the consent calendar?
Through the chair. Move to pull item F.
Any action on the remainder of the consent calendar?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so carried. Item F, approved. Out-of-state travel for Water Division staff to attend the American Water Works Association Annual Conference and Exposition, June 12 to the 16th, 2011, in Washington, D.C.
Chair, my understanding is, obviously, this year the annual conference is being held on the East Coast. Mr. Reinhardt, I believe, is the person that will be attending, and with this, obviously, licensing and et cetera, but it talks about best management practices and innovative techniques and technologies, and so I would, for myself, I would like to see maybe an update or when he comes back from the conference, and if that's not convenient for him to be present, maybe something written that would update us on what was learned, gained, and what these best management practices are going forward.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that happens.
Okay. Item on action F.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second on item F. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Move right on to public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, mailed. We have no public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda this evening. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to speak to the council on items not on this agenda? All right. Item 10, conduct of business. Receive an oral report from City Council Subcommittee on Consolidation of Fire Services among the cities of San Bruno, Milbrae, and the Central County Fire Department, which is Burlingame and Hillsborough. Would you like to start? Okay. Yeah. This is just an update this evening. We had a meeting last week. It was our second or third meeting with the total group. We looked at the proposals, not in depth by the city managers who have been working on this for quite a while. There is, we believe, real merit in a merger in the future. We have a lot of issues to cover. No action required at this time. They're working towards resolutions to some of the issues that arose at the study session, and will be getting back to the entire council in the very near future. Some of those are governance, parity, all of these departments have different pay scales, and of course, cost savings for the various participants, meaning the cities. So there's still quite a bit of work to do to get the exact numbers where they need to be, and we encourage the city managers, all four cities and three entities, to continue working very aggressively because we don't want this to drag on much longer. We're going to make this, have this come back to this group very, very shortly. Mr. Medina, anything?
The only thing I was going to say, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I was going to say was, we were also, in this oral presentation, looking to our colleagues for concurrence that we believe, that you would also like to see this be pursued and continue the discussion for potential shared services or not, but at least to continue down the path of what the mayor's indicated.
Right. Central County, Burlingame and Hillsborough have proven it works for them. We have also proven over the last number of years that it's worked for us between San Bruno and Milbrae, so it would be nice to get all four cities together. It just makes a lot of sense. So we're going to try very, very hard to get that done.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I am in favor of pursuing it also, but it's, and I just realized that there was a condition that Milbrae was possibly wanting some resolution because of funding that's going to change. Did anything come about that?
There were some very, very preliminary numbers that were put out, which is kind of a dangerous thing to do because it gives people an indication that maybe they're not saving as much as they thought, or some false hope going down the road. We encourage the city managers to go back with the thought that all four cities in this operation, as we move forward, would not in fact be hurt, and that's their task to make this work so that everyone is going to benefit one way or the other by, number one, serving the public properly with response times and number of trucks and engines and houses, and number two, by a potential savings down the road of a lot of money for all four cities together.
Through the chair, just to add on to that from Mr. Ibera, is that numbers were ran for '08, '09, and a formula was utilized in savings, and the, we've asked the managers to go back and utilize the '09 to '10 so that they're more current, more accurate, and utilizing the formula to come back with the numbers in addition to what the mayor said so that everything is current and factual.
Thank you. I was mainly referring to a partial tax that the city of Milbrae may not be, you know, may be ending soon, and I was afraid in earlier discussions that may rush into because of that.
No, that's all being taken into consideration. All right. Any other questions on that? Item B, adopt a resolution approving property owner notice and protest process for 2011-12 garbage rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Edmund Soon, Finance Director. The city has a franchise agreement with Recology San Bruno on February 28, and in accordance with the agreement, Recology requested an interim rate year adjustment consisting of 80% of the CPI change for wage earners in the San Francisco area, and also an increase in disposal fees to be passed through to the customers. The result of these two adjustment calculations is a proposed rate increase of 1.447%. In addition, based on the feedback from the community and the city council in their last rate application, Recology is ready to implement a residential 20-gallon totter beginning July 1, 2011, with a proposed rate, monthly rate of $18.44 compared to the current 32-gallon rate of $23.44. The proposed 20-gallon service will be in the form of adding an insert to a 30-gallon, a 32-gallon totter. There will be some costs associated with the service that includes the cost of the insert and as well as the delivery of the totter to, and also projected loss revenues from folks that will migrate from the 32-gallon service to the 20-gallon service. So for instance, someone who is currently paying the $23.44 for the 32-gallon service, when they migrate to the 20-gallon service, obviously, there's that $5 difference in revenues that would be lost for Recology. Since it's difficult to estimate what the migration factor would be to the new service, Recology has agreed to basically front these costs and defer the recovery of this until the 2012-13 rate adjustment period. At that time, Recology will then be able to use the actual costs that are incurred in relationship to the conversion and also the actual loss revenues associated with the conversion, and then that would be brought forth to the city council as part of the rate adjustment for that period, including the rate adjustment for then the subsequent period. Based on the proposed rate adjustment of the 1.447%, the 32-gallon totter will increase by 34 cents from the current $23.44 rate to $23.78. That still puts the city within the median in terms of the surrounding communities in the San Mateo County. Obviously, the cost of services in the various agencies depend on a number of factors, including the frequency of recycling, whether or not they have a single stream recycling operation such as we do out here in the city of San Bruno. Other factors may include the ratio of residential and commercial customers in the community. Staff is recommending that the city use a rate adjustment process for the proposed rate increase comparable to the notice and protest provisions of Proposition 218, which requires that a written notice be provided to the property owners 45 days in advance of a public hearing, following which the city council can then act on approving the rate increases. The schedule includes then tonight's meeting, obviously, and then the notices would then be mailed out on March 25, so to start the 45-day period. Following that, it would be then a May 10 public hearing for consideration and also consideration of the protests, and then subsequent to that would be a May 24 city council meeting to conduct the second reading and then take an action to adopt the new rates, and then finally, if successful, then the new rate increases will take effect July 1 of the fiscal year. Staff in the city council's subcommittee consisting of Mayor Rain and Vice Mayor Salazar met with Recology last week to review the rate increases, and the recommendation obviously is to bring forth to the city council tonight and authorize the mailing of the notice and direct staff to schedule a public hearing for formal consideration of the rate increase. Staff's recommendation tonight for the city council is to adopt the resolution approving the property owner's notice and protest process for the 2011-12 solid waste collection and disposal rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno. One of the comments that was brought forth by the subcommittee was the, kind of the constraint timeline that's involved in this process. The way the franchise agreement reads is that Recology has until February 28 of the calendar year to provide the rate adjustment request. We've since talked to Recology, and they've agreed to accelerate the requests to approximately two weeks into February, therefore giving the committee and also city council a little bit more extra time in considering the rate adjustments going forward. General manager from Recology is here, also in the audience, so at this point in time, I'd like to offer any questions that the city council has for myself or Recology San Bruno.
Any questions of council staff at this point in time? No?
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I have two questions for Recology. One, can they give us an update a little bit on how effective our recycling is, has been? Are we slipping? Are we getting better? And secondly, I believe currently, or at least previously, you could buy a sticker or whatever for an extra bag pickup versus having to call them ahead of time. Is that process still going to be available? And if so, what sort of costs are projected?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and while they're taking questions, a question for Recology, I guess, is what was the input for the 20-gallon? You know, and so it sounds as if you're going to, you know, you're definitely going to implement it, and that's going to have a cost, you know, a cost increase, obviously. So I'm just, what made, what prompted you to go forward with a, you know, with the 20-gallon? You know, because I don't recall being a major outcry on it.
Okay.
Maybe I can answer that question. This item was addressed in several, if I recall correctly, of the resident protest responses, resident protest process whereby we mail to every property owner in the city of San Bruno and give them an opportunity to tell you, but their vote essentially about, or to protest if they wish that you not move forward to impose this rate. In the process of responding to that mailing, there were, I would say, at least several of the respondents who commented that a smaller garbage container with a reduced cost would better meet their needs and their interests with respect to garbage service. So I think it's fair to say that this was an initiative that has been promoted more, most aggressively by the city as opposed to by Recology in the interests of the residents based on that mail ballot, or mailed protest process last year.
Well, my concern is that, and I know the process, and we probably, out of all our customers, we get maybe 100, I think that was the most that we've ever gotten, a little over 100 protest letters, and so now, maybe they're protesting the increase, and now, and then they want a reduction cost, and now they're going to be faced in 2012 with an increase based on that reduced totter. So as much as 30 cents or 40 cents a year is not a big deal, we may be faced with 2012 with a 30 or 40 cent increase plus an extra increase based on 20-gallon inserts. Yeah. Yeah. So I'd just like Recology to address that, you know, as to, you know.
Yeah, we talked about that in some depth at the subcommittee meeting, and there is a demand definitely for it, and I think, Recology, you're on, but you can probably tell us, you know, factually, percentage-wise, what you anticipate and what it's based on because other cities do have a 20-gallon totter.
Thank you. We did, we do receive calls in the office asking about the 20-gallon cart, and a lot of those calls, I believe, are stemmed from the rollout in the SBWMA service area where Recology San Mateo County has now taken over, and they do offer a 20-gallon service. We try, knowing that some of our residents would want that 20, we worked with the city on developing this rate, and we took into consideration the residents and how this would impact them, and this is why we chose the insert, because of the cost-saving factor. We tried to be able to offer the 20-gallon at the minimal cost to the resident, and that's why we went with the insert versus a cart. A cart is approximately $32, and an insert is $18. So there's a big cost savings in that aspect. So that's how we came, I mean, there was other factors involved, was the cost of the cart, the delivery. We'll have to bring in the carts, wash them, and rivet an insert into the new carts. We also, that is really the most sustainable option because we can reuse the current 32-gallon carts that are already at the residents' homes versus having a surplus of unused 32-gallon carts. We also had to take into consideration, like Edmund said, is the lost revenue from the 32-gallon to the 20. The migration rates in our surrounding cities, there was a 40% migration in Pacifica when they ordered, when they went to the 20-gallon cart. There's also approximately a 30% migration in Hollister, which was our closest Recology city at the time to take into consideration. So the migration in some of these cities was high, and there is a possibility of a high migration, and so.
What is that in numbers? If, say, San Bruno experiences even a 20%, 20% migration?
Okay, let me just tell you one second, sorry.
A few thousand.
If we took into consideration our residential 32-gallon customers, if we did a 30% migration, which is where we started, that's 2,340 out of the 7,800 32-gallon residential customers.
Significant.
So that's kind of why we chose and worked with staff to keep the rate of the 20-gallon at a reasonable cost as not to drive everyone to the 20, for those who just could utilize it, and there are some residents that could utilize that 20.
Through the chair. On that issue, there was a couple things, and I think I remember we were just like this, I'm sitting here and you were standing there, and the thing was, where's the incentive for the resident who is recycling more? So this might be that option. But I know you're saying the loss in revenue, but in essence, we're having less disposal. So in essence, you're having less to go to the landfill. Is that not correct?
That's not correct. Where there's nothing, there's no change unless the customer increases their recycling habits to encourage themselves to go to the 20. If they can see that there's a 20, and then the next six months, they say as a family, "Let's try and recycle more and see if we can create less waste," but as it stands right now, nothing's being pulled from the waste stream. They're just moving their garbage from the half-filled 32 into the 20.
And compost, is that something also being?
That's something that can be explored, that we're, it's very encouraged.
And we had a question about, how are we doing with recycling?
We're doing tremendous with recycling, Mr. Rico. Participation is high. We have an over 90% participation rate, and we have no complaints from our recycling processor for contamination. So we're doing fantastic.
Tell us about the stickers.
The extra bag tag stickers are available. You can call our office at (583) 8536 and order them through a customer service rep. And last, I remember, they were also available at the counter in City Hall.
Okay. Anything else for Recology?
Just on the recycling, the city needs to meet a threshold, isn't it 50% still? And how are we achieving that goal? The city.
The city as a whole in diversion don't have that number directly in front of me.
We'll get that information for you. That's reported on an annual basis, and the last I heard about it, there was a problem with the calculation in our apparent compliance several years ago. So I'm saying the absence of mine, knowing anything about it right this minute, suggests that we are well in compliance, but we will get you that specific information.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions regarding this item? Okay. Thank you, Kirsten. Action?
Do you need a press session?
Not everybody at once now.
Through the chair, I'll adopt, I'll adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item C, adopt a resolution approving the Tier Two drought implementation plan among San Francisco Public Utility Commission wholesale customers pursuant to Section C.11-C of the San Francisco Water Supply Agreement.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Clara Fabry, Public Services Director. In 2009, a water supply agreement was signed between San Francisco PUC and the 26 Bay Area wholesale customers. In this agreement was included a so-called water shortage allocation, a plan to allocate water from the regional water systems to retail and wholesale customer during a system-wide water shortage of 20 or less, 20% or less. This, this plan is a tiered system. Tier one allocates the water between PUC and the wholesale customers, and tier two allocates the water between the wholesale customers themselves, between the 26 agencies. This resolution what you have before you tonight approves the methodology, how to allocate the water between these 26 agencies. If you are not adopting the resolution tonight, then this will cause all of the wholesale customer resolution adopting this Tier Two plan to not take effect and automatically expire. If all of the wholesale customers approve this plan, then, will not approve this plan, then the basket board of directors will unilaterally adopt water allocation. If no agreed on water allocation will be in place, then based on this master water supply contract, SFPUC has the right to allocate water of their choosing. This is the main reason why this plan had to be a consent document between all of the 26 agencies, and like any consent document, really presented major challenges. The 26 agencies, through their representative, negotiated and worked very hard for many, many months to be able to reach this consent position, was an ongoing challenge to balance between the need of the region, or say, whole, and to protect and represent the specific interest of the city of San Bruno. To conquer this challenge, the agencies agreed to, to develop and to agree on certain basic principles, and those, those basic principles are as follow. Incentive for water conservation, predictability, minimum allocation for basic health need, prevent unnecessary adverse economic impacts, avoid reallocation without consent, consider, and also to consider inherited differences between all of the agencies. These principles were incorporated in a very complex table, and I am presenting this only as an illustration. I am not even assuming that you will be able to read, and it's not my intent for you to read this table, is I just want to illustrate to you how complex table was developed based on those principles to allocate the water between the 26 agencies. This methodology, then, in your package, you have a very detailed description of the methodology itself, and this, this table represent the numeric representation of those very detailed described process. Using this formula, if a water emergency would need to be implemented today, then this is a specific case study based on the water, on the water purchase. In 2008 and 2009, by the city of San Bruno, our allocation for water emergency would be 1.75 MGD. Even if you recall, our, our supply guarantee is 3.25. Then our allocation during a water emergency would be 1.75 based on the fact that in average in 2008 and 2009, the city of San Bruno- San Bruno purchased water from PUC for one point ninety-four MGD during those two years. I just want to emphasize again that this is a, you are not approving any number, this is just a case study showing how this, what the result can be. But what you are approving, the methodology itself, and this will be calculated using that methodology whenever a water emergency will need to be implemented. Back in November of last year, this methodology was shared and presented to the utility subcommittee, and I am standing for any question, and my recommendation is for you to approve this methodology through the approval of the resolution.
Any questions of staff? No? Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Before, before you go on, I just want to thank Clara, it is a long and arduous task. And when she said major undertaking and major challenges, she was definitely, it was definitely an understatement. Working with twenty-five other water agencies, all trying to protect their water sources and get the most water they can out of very limited and arbitrary number that San Francisco PUC gave us was not easy. So I admire her for sticking to it and getting us to a conclusion, and everybody gave a little bit, everybody moved around a little bit, and everyone tried to protect, like East Palo Alto, whose water problems are massive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right. Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an ownership, operation, and maintenance agreement with the city county association of governments of Samatello County and the county of Samatello for the Samatello County Traffic Operation Management System Smart Corridors Project.
Honorable Mayor and councilmember, you had before you this item back in September of two thousand eight, when was approved a memorandum of
Two thousand eight?
Understanding to develop and to implement this project.
Oh, yeah.
Partly to that memorandum of understanding with eight different agencies, one of which is the city of San Bruno. The action what you have before you tonight is approving a agreement identifying the, identifying the ownership and the financial responsibility for maintenance of this facility. Just to remind all of you the purpose of this project. This project is one piece of a bigger overall regional project for congestion management, and this is the first phase of that bigger project in the whole region. And specifically, this project will improve traffic congestion, will improve traffic operation, and increase the efficiency of the existing facilities. And also help us to better manage any major event impact on our community. Just to be a little bit more specific about in San Bruno, what this project really will do, in case of any major accident on one-one, this project will enable Caltrain to divert traffic to, to El Camino through San Bruno Avenue to ease congestion. And this project will include improvement IT, intelligent technology on San Bruno Avenue to help drivers to get to El Camino, and will direct them in either to the north or south on El Camino, depending on which line on one-one is on the emergency operation. Based on this memorandum of understanding, the city will have no financial responsibility for maintaining or replacing this system. CICAG is taking full financial responsibility for ongoing maintenance and any issue and replacement of the system. My recommendation, this is a beneficial, will provide a benefit to the city, preventing the motorists to try to find their own way through the city, actually to prevent that spillover congestion throughout the whole city. Will focus them and will, will help them through the city, to, to get to El Camino through San Brun, San Bruno Avenue only. It is my recommendation for you to approve this memorandum of understanding with the expectation that will be one additional step to develop a very detailed operational agreement with Caltrain.
Any questions?
To the chair, so the
Yeah, Ken.
So all the equipment's in place?
Will be in place.
Oh, will be in place.
Will be, the project and the design is done, is the expectation that after all, each agency will sign this MOU, then the project will be implemented sometime this summer.
Oh, okay.
The county took over the response, the county provide design and construction support for this project to CICAG, and the county will implement the project this summer.
They did all that in about three years. It's pretty good.
Okay, any other questions?
To the chair.
Michael.
The, under the maintenance conditions that are in the, in the attachment two, it says that the city's going to assume ownership of upgraded city-owned traffic signals, and I'm wondering if that's going to have an impact on what our maintenance costs are for those, I mean, are these more difficult to operate or maintain? And also, it says electrical costs associated with those, so are we going to see any impact based on that?
It's not our assumption, and based on our discussion internally and also with other cities and who developed the project itself, all of those will be updated and probably even will decrease our maintenance that, our, those will be updated with new equipment, and that even will decrease our ongoing cost. It's not our assumption to have increased ongoing cost as a result of this project.
And I imagine that some of this work will, will go into what we're calling our redevelopment corridor, and I'm wondering if there's any opportunities for us to piggyback on some of the work that's going to be done as we try to implement some of the improvements that we're looking at doing?
Yeah, even during the transit corridor discussion, was already known that the smart corridor will be part of this corridor development, and some of the communication equipment installed in San Bruno can be and will, can be used in long term for our benefit too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item ten E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Quality Striping Inc. for the Fleetwood Drive Traffic Calming Project in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and approving the construction budget in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of city council. My name's Tina Singh, Associate Civil Engineer with Public Services. The project in front of you today is a striping and pavement marking construction contract, which is part of the Fleetwood Traffic Calming Project that was approved in two thousand nine. And the, as you called, the Traffic Calming Project for Fleetwood, the intent was to inform the motorists of the speed limit by installing additional speed limit signs, and to slow down traffic speed by installing edge line in the method of visually narrowing the driving lanes. This part, the paving project limit is from the North City Limit at West Borough's Avenue, and West Borough Drive to Crestmore Drive. The construction contract for your consideration, if approved, will, staff is anticipating to award the contract end of this month, and with anticipation to complete the project in summer, in the summer. The fiscal impact, we received two bids, of one, the lowest bid is forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five, the other bid received was seventy-two thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars. Staff is recommending to accept a low bid with the proposed contract budget of fifty-seven thousand five hundred, that which includes fifteen percent of contingency. All project costs are within budget, and this will not require additional city council action for completion of the overall project. And the last phase, which does not include the city council action, is the radar display, speed display. We're planning to install it by, install and purchase the equipment through a purchase order. We're anticipating to put in the purchase of equipment this spring, and also with the anticipation to finish installing this June. So with that, is staff's recommendation for the city council to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Fleetwood Traffic Calming Project in an amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and improving the construction budget in an amount of fifty-seven thousand and five hundred dollars.
Good. Any questions of staff?
To the chair.
Michael.
I recall a while back, we approved the purchase of a thermoplastic mixing trailer that was going to be used for street markings and striping. How come we're not doing it ourselves?
We had talked to our staff, our street maintenance crew, and based on the configuration of Fleet Drive, Fleet, Drive, it's much of a steep slope for two main crew that we are able to allocate it for striping, and it's actually going to take a longer time for our, you know, the size, and we find that it's more efficient that we could do this with a contract.
In addition to what Tina said, which is, she is absolutely right, also that new equipment was purchased by us last year, and it's a cer, a certain learning process involved and training process involved, and the crew already did great work last year, at the end of the year, refreshing many of the existing pavement. And for this phase, they are the most effective to refresh existing pavement, existing striping. They can produce a higher productivity and they can be more effective. In a later phase, they can, can, they will be able to be comparative and very effective implementing new striping also.
Just follow, follow on that. So because it's Fleetwood Drive is what I'm being told is why you want to have it outsourced for the striping. If it were somewhere else within the city, that wasn't so steep or so long, then that would be different, then we would have staff do that, is that what I'm hearing?
It's a combination of things, the slope, but also the fact that this is a new striping that had to be, has to be marked on the pavement first. And our crew is not that efficient yet doing the marking themselves. They are much more efficient at this phase of their training process. This is a very many new equipment for us to refresh already existing markings.
So we already have efficient staff, so how long do you see it taking before they become even more efficient, and they're able to, after their appropriate training and being able to take on that task?
They are very efficient, refreshing, refreshing the existing mark, marking, and that is a huge need for the whole city. And I think they will be able to be comparable with the private sector very shortly, probably one, two years.
In two years.
I just have to ask a question. Do we have any concern that the bids were so far apart, the two bids?
I would not have any concern. This contractor is known to the city, is, they did other good quality work, is no concern.
And the, and the other, the other company just figured they'd throw a big number and see if they got it? I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those discrepancies that, you know, begs to, you know, to question, you know, and, and I accept the fact that you're familiar with the company that you're going to award the company, you know, you want to award the contract to, you're familiar with them, because if not, then I think there's concern.
Based on our review of the bid, is our department feel very comfortable to award the contract.
Any other questions? Action?
I'll adopt the resolution, or introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item eleven, reports of commissions, boards, and committees, there are no reports this evening. Item twelve, comments from council members. Anyone have to, like to say anything? All right, item thirteen, we have one, two, three, four, five closed session items. A is confer with legal counsel regarding pending workers' compensation appeal, Cox versus City of San Bruno, and JT two Integrated Workers' Compensation Appeals Board, SFO zero three nine five one three three, California Government Code five four nine five six point nine A. Item B is the city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six regarding direction for labor negotiations with the police and public safety mid-management bargaining units. Item C, confer with legal counsel regarding state regional water quality control board citation number R two twenty-ten zero 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 four, California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A. Item D, confer with legal counsel regarding Baykeeper versus City of San Bruno, United States District Court Civil Case Number zero zero seven five three SC, California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A. And item E, confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, California Government Code Section five four nine five four point nine A. And city attorney, will we have any reportable action?
Unlikely.
Unlikely, so you, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to, so. Item fourteen is adjournment, our next city council meeting will begin April twelfth right here at seven PM at the senior center. I would like to close this meeting with a moment of silence for our friends in not just Narita, but all of Japan. They suffered a terrible, terrible loss and will continue to suffer for a number of years from the earthquake and tsunami. They were very sensitive for our loss here six months ago, and I'd like to close this meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.